Please join me in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, sorry for my lateness. It's been a great Monday, so we're here now. Let me just get the agenda open here.
While you're doing that, Sean, getting it open, just let folks know that Catherine Woodson is excused. She has something she needs to deal with, and Jaren Shaw is ill and not able to attend. So I hope he feels better.
So I just wanted to thank all of our board chairs for joining us tonight. I had this thought this afternoon when I was thinking about this, about your roles and, you know, just being the leaders of your boards and just what that means. So I really appreciate you being the folks that are chosen to be the leaders of your elected board in that, you know, that role is really, it's a difficult one because it's something that you have to do in a, in a way that works with everybody and takes the information of all your peers in that group and kind of direct the message of your own board and committee. So, you know, you're not always the decision maker, but just the leader of that group. And it's something I greatly appreciate and thank you for stepping up to do that piece. Eric, do you have anything else you would like to add as a welcome?
Well, so we have some folks on Zoom as well as in person. So I do appreciate everybody being here. Wait a second. Yeah, so we do appreciate everybody being here. I really enjoy working with all of you. It can be a challenge to, as Sean said, to have the roles that you do. It can be extra responsibility. It can be a lot of extra work depending on the board or committee. And I think you all have the support of the groups that are with you, but as you know, you're here and you're in the positions you are because you're doing extra willingly or unwillingly in some cases. But I wanted to say thanks to everybody regardless of why you're taking on this role. It is really important and it makes a difference. And one of the things we'll be talking about tonight is the support that the select board and town staff can offer to the boards and committees. And I hope that it can come the other direction as well and you can let us know when it's time, you know, what else we can do, what else you need. And we'll do our best to try to meet those needs in a way that makes sense for everybody. So that's all I had, Sean.
Great. So just, I'm going to run through our agenda quickly just so you have an idea of what we're going to do. So we're going to review staff support for boards and committees. We have five minutes for that. Our budget process and goal, we have 10 minutes. Capital reserve and special revenue policy review, we have five minutes. Talking about minutes, agendas, annual reports and public communication, five minutes. Boards committees reporting, 25 minutes. We've allocated two minutes per group. Dave has volunteered nicely to be our timekeeper.
You're four minutes behind.
Yep. See, I'm on it. Then we have five minutes for our closing remarks. All right, Eric, want to take us away with staff support?
All right, so.
Dave wants you.
Yeah, right. So we do have a list of board and committee liaisons and support staff. And that was included in the packet and the link for the meeting. So what we have is basically a matrix that identifies the various staff people and the boards and committees that we, that we work with and makes a connection. And in the past, we've had pretty consistent representation and engagement from various staff members on committees like, say Cemetery Committee, that's the Cemetery Sexton. I'm the road commissioner. I work with the road committee. Those types of connections are pretty standard, but we are trying to reach out and expand more into support staff for groups like Trails and Conservation that might not have the same direct point of contact that other boards and committees do. So we have tried to break it out so that everybody has at least somebody that is the point of contact besides me. I'm already kind of spread around pretty, pretty well. I'm always available, of course, but it would be helpful, I think, in some cases to have different points of contact. So we did discuss this with the staff and at the last staff meeting. So everybody's aware of what their roles are. And if you ever have a need for, you know, additional staff support, additional contact, additional information, feel free to reach out to them or me and we'll do what we can. I know every committee has different needs. Some of you just need a pile of gravel someplace. Some of you need help drafting documents. It's quite a diverse set of needs that you have. Communication outreach to the public is another area that we can offer staff support. And many of you know that Angelica and Kristen are great resources to get those things through. But again, if you need something that's more involved, feel free to reach out to me. Teresa, of course, is your primary point of contact for financial needs. Anytime you have questions about current account balances, things like that, she's the place to start. And really any staff person, if you are working on a project and you think you might need a building permit, the code office is available. You know, we really are, the town staff really are committed to making sure that you succeed. That's one of my main missions and one of my goals. I do try to make it to meetings periodically. Some of you guys see me once a month. Some of you see me maybe once a year, but you know, if you want to see me more, let me know and I'll see what I can do. But the message really is that the staff is here to support you. They're aware of it. I'm aware of it. I want to make sure that the boards and committees are aware of it and the public knows that these groups of dedicated volunteers are not doing this alone. They do have municipal staff support and that, you know, it's collaborative. We work together on things. So that's my piece about staff support. Sean, do you want to take any questions or comments now or do you want to wait until the end? Or how do you want to do that?
I think it'd be good if we kind of just go along and if people have questions each point, we can gladly take them.
Okay, all right.
Anna, can you go to?
Oh, yeah. Please, thank you.
Come on, you're a pro by now.
I'd like to introduce myself to.
Please do.
Hannah Flannery, Reedfield Rec Chair. As you're talking about staff, I was just curious if you want to add in Jen Worthing's new role as community coordinator and how that is.
She is listed on the matrix.
Yeah, but you're absolutely right. So I'm not all the boarding committees are aware that we have hired and have had for the last three or four months. A community programming coordinator position has been filled. Jen Worthing filled that position. She has been organizing events, helping with rec sports primarily. Also being a liaison with the age-friendly group, working in partnership with the library board where appropriate and vice versa, right? And so that community programming position is available generally for any board and committee that has a need, that has programming or activities that you would like to have some support with. I can't guarantee that she will have full capacity. Right now, we have her at halftime on average, 40 hours a week in the summer and down to about eight to 12 in January and February. But that position is there to help with community engagement, community programming. So thank you, Hannah, for mentioning that. Her information's available on the website. And if you want to have her attend your meeting just so you can talk with her about what your committee does and what programs you might like to offer townwide, she would be a great resource for that. So feel free to look her up on the website or reach out to me. We'll make sure you have her contact. Thanks, Hannah.
Any other questions on support staff for boards yet? Rob?
Rob Peel, Trails Chair. Where do I see this matrix?
It's in a packet. The email you received for the meeting should have included a link to the agenda and packet page, but.
Okay, I didn't see it.
It's, it's a separate document. So if you go to the meeting page, it is something, what's it called? It's called Annual Chairs Meeting Materials. So for the, go to the select board meeting page and then it's right there on the page.
Okay, great.
And when I do the budget outreach, I'll also be including the staff contact for your individual boards and committees so that everybody can be on the same page.
So is the staff contact on this matrix now?
Yes, it is. So and for Trails, what do we have?
Matt Seem.
Matt Seem is just Trails. And I think you've been working with him already pretty closely, so.
Yes.
Yeah, good, good, good. Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Go ahead, Eric. You're crushing it. Budget process.
Oh, jeez, I get to talk again? I didn't do a good job with this agenda, did I? So moving on to the budget process, we've been developing this process for quite a while. As you know, what we have for a goal currently is to have the individual department budgets draft form, not final form, but draft form due by the end of the month of December. So December 31st. So you should all have at least one meeting, if not two, between now and that deadline. Please do your very best to meet that. It does help me when I have draft numbers from the boards and committees. If not, I will typically just put in a flat, flat budget, you know, just insert numbers from the prior year for revenue and expense. But, but really it's always better for you and better for me and for the budget committee and the select board if there's been some discussion and thought put into what your budget is, why it might be the same, why it might be different. And, you know, a half-page explanation and then, you know, a number of items listed out. If you can get them into the categories that we have for our accounting, that is ideal. So what you will see from me in the next couple of weeks will be the current expenditures year-to-date, the current year budget, the percent expanded, things like that. And I've sent those out in the past. Will also include, if appropriate, your reserve balances for any reserve accounts that you have an affiliation with. And that will all hopefully give you a better read on where you are and where you might want to be. But that's just the background again, and it really is important. If you have special projects to make it, to make an effort and to put some time into, if you need to find out how much a new set of basketballs is going to cost, do the work and let us know and then we'll make sure it's in the budget and we can get that paid for. If you need, you know, gravel materials, you know, reach out to Pike. Or if you need staff support with some of that, we can, I can potentially help as well. But the idea is that if, if you have a project or something that needs attention, find a way to find the information so we can have good information for the budget process. Because doing that in March or April isn't as effective and it can be quite challenging to try to backfill. And the more we can do on the front end, the better. And we are, you know, the staff, Teresa and myself, we're trying to do more to help you find what you need, right? To get you the background information early. And we're hoping that you can kind of reciprocate that and get information back to us so we can have a full budget draft for the select board, for the budget committee as we start getting into the budget process. One trend that I've seen and that has been intentional is that the budget process continues to move further and further back. And we, in part because of how we've had to manage the the secret ballot voting and changes in state law, all of those things have kind of pushed us back from having a budget that used to be, you know, completed in, in end of, end of May to a budget that now needs to be completed in early, early April at the latest. So we moved back 60 days probably from where we used to be over the past six or eight years. And that's been a change and you've all kind of struggled through that with us as we adapted. But that, that is where we are heading. I don't think we're going to get too much further back because unless you have about six months of data, I find it hard to project and hard to budget. I'm sure you do as well. But we've kind of settled, I think, at that resting point, right? Where the budget process will effectively start in December. We want to have our budget drafts and then we can move forward. And then January, February are very busy. March, April also quite busy. A little bit of a lull in May and then June, we have our town meeting vote. Some changes to scheduling. In the past, we've had different boards and committees present in different ways to the budget committee. If you haven't been presenting your budget to the, to the budget committee, I do encourage you to do that. It's not a requirement, but it certainly is helpful for them, for me, for the select board to know that there's been some vetting and some discussion of budget items. So I'll just run through the groups really quickly here. We do have on January 8th, Departments One. That's mostly me and that's mostly the town staff that would be presenting there. So that includes general government, maintenance, Kennebec County tax, general assistance and regional assessments. There is a little bit of stuff in there for grant and planning work. And I may be reaching out to groups like Planning Board and the Open Space Working Group about some finances they may want to look at for that piece. But otherwise, if you have a project that you think is going to be needing engineering support or planning support, try to give me a heads up on that. Also, we do have a very important capital planning workshop coming up in, in December. It is, let me go back here, the 18th. It is, let me go back here, the 18th, and that's a joint select board meeting and budget committee meeting workshop. That's the time where they talk about major capital projects. Most of those are fairly well-known, they're already in the queue. If any of the boards and committees have anything new that you think is on the horizon, definitely let us know. If you have something you want to advocate for that you think might not be getting appropriate attention, that's one of the good opportunities to do that and say, hey, we have a capital project that needs to get done. Whether it's retaining a wall at the cemetery or something else. But that's another important date and opportunity for participation. And I guess I'll just stop there and pause for a second and say that, you know, the public does have a lot of opportunity for engagement. But I think it's important to note, and I'm sure the select board will maybe add some comments to it. But we do want to have the board and committee leadership and membership as well, if appropriate, involved with the budget process. Not just in independently developing your proposals, but also in attending meetings and, you know, giving feedback. Because that really is an important part of this. Going to the budget committee meetings when your department is being discussed, one of the easiest and first ways to do it. But we also discuss the budget at the select board meetings. And we've heard from different quarters that sometimes we do too much and sometimes we do too little as far as outreach and engagement. But in my view anyway, one of the best ways to just flatten all that out is to just show up and tell us what you need. And that can make a big difference in how budgets get shaped anyway. Do you guys have anything to add? Yeah, okay.
I would just say, I agree, Eric. I think what I really love about the budget calendar is if somebody says to me, what's happening and when are you talking about that again? I always just say, you should check the budget calendar. Because it tells you when we're reading the first draft, it tells you when, you know, it's set in our agenda so far ahead that there shouldn't be any surprises to anybody. They have a great opportunity to see, when are we going to be talking about that? But I also think it's good for yourselves if you do have things that you are bringing forward, that you are there on those evenings too. Because they are the evenings where we do have the most public questions. And although I feel confident that you share the information well enough for us to answer for you, I still sometimes would rather go, Hannah's here, you answer. Or Rob's here, Rob, tell us what you think. So I appreciate when you do have something that we do discuss that you are here, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll just say too, as chairs, feel free to nominate members of your committee to participate as well, if that's easy for you, because you already do a lot. So the next set of groups is Department Two and that is discussed on January 22nd. And then Group Three is on February 12th. So we have about three weeks. And so that's really when we have to have those numbers really starting to coalesce. And I would very much appreciate, depending on which group you're in, having the final committee draft, right? Available a week or two weeks before those meeting dates. And that gives me time to maybe that, ask questions and make sure that it's properly entered into our trio system and can show up in a timely fashion and in an accurate fashion in the budget materials that the budget committee and the select board consider. So the Departments Two group, this has changed a little bit. I've tried to bundle things that were more community service oriented in the Departments Two. So we have recreation and open space groups. We have community services, so animal control, age-friendly initiatives, library. You know, the racca's beach conservation, things like that. And then cemeteries. So I think that makes more sense and it will help with the flow perhaps. So that's a change. And then the Group Three, I put together some more of the hard kind of capital intensive groups, which would be fire department, roads and drainage, capital planning, solid waste, transfer station, debt service and then unclassified. So I think that, hopefully that's a better balance and a better flow. Certainly, I think will be easier for the budget committee to handle things coming in the same kind of class of activity. But again, this project or this process budget is always iterative. We always try to do better every year. Sometimes we step back and say, well, that didn't work out very well, we have to try something different. But we do, we do want to make sure we have a good process, efficient process and transparent process. And I think we're doing okay, but always, again, feedback's welcome.
I would just like to highlight too this year that we were fortunate enough to get some communication from RSU 38 ahead of time as well about theirs so that our public hearing and their public hearing on their vote don't happen on the same evening. So those are separated out this year, which was a bit of a snafu last year for sure for us.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I'm grateful that I don't have to try to be in two places at one time this year.
Okay, so any comments on the budget process from you guys right now? Okay. I think you're up, Sean.
I do not think so.
I think we're talking about goals, aren't we? Is it budget goals next?
Well, you're going to go into the capital reserve and special revenue policy.
Oh, jeez, I should have split that up.
Yeah, I know. This is your, this part was your agenda, sir.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we have adopted last year a capital reserve policy that clearly, I hope, establishes expectations for how the capital reserve accounts are funded, how they're expended from, what their purpose is, what the purpose of capital planning in general is for the town of Reedfield. I just printed off the table of contents. Is anybody, I think we emailed that out to the boards and committees. Has anybody here not received a copy of the capital policy or online? Everybody's got that? Okay, all right. Grace, looks like she might not have. So I can make sure, if you haven't received it, definitely send me an email. But I will also include it when we send out the budget documents for your individual boards and committees. I'll make sure that we have a link to this so that way you have quick access to it. Because it really does help in the budget process, especially for those boards and committees that have use of and not management of, but I guess stewardship is the word I would use. Because it's the select board that has the management responsibilities. But the stewardship of reserve accounts, it's really useful to know what the balances are and how those can be applied. Because these are a resource for the individual boards and committees. And it's tax money that's available for medium to long-term projects. It could be a short-term project, but primarily capital reserves are for things that, you know, are more than $5,000, have a lifespan of at least three years. And most of the time, we're talking, you know, 20, 30, 50 years for a lot of our investments, depending on how they flow. But this document, I think, sets a decent structure for how all the information can flow, gives a resource for you in the budgeting process and sets clear expectations in all directions, right? It establishes the roles of the boards and committees when it comes to capital. It establishes the role of the select board and budget committee. And my role as treasurer and Teresa's role as finance director. And again, I think it helps with the collaboration. If you see something that you think needs to be changed in this, if you have, you know, a disagreement or objection to, you know, how a reserve account may have been classified or described, whether it's revenue, expense, whatever, just let us know and we can talk about it. And I guess that's really what I had for this, other than saying I think it is a really positive thing. It certainly makes me feel a lot better about the budget process that the information's available out there and everybody has clear roles and expectations and that's important, so.
You're off the hook for a little bit.
Thank you. It would have been done better if I had a little more time. All right.
You gained a minute. The timekeeper says you gained us a minute, so that's good.
All right, there you go.
The next piece is, I just wanted to, excuse me, talk about minutes, agendas and annual reports in our public communication. So one of the things that we try to do very well, and I always think of Ralph, you know, when we talk about minutes. He was a strong proponent of making sure we had our minutes in, whether they were approved minutes or draft minutes, to make sure that the public had an understanding of what was going on within each committee and board. So we've definitely seen a lot of change in that aspect from all the boards and committees and I really appreciate that. It's nice when we get the packets on a Friday to be able to just see what's been going on outside of the work we've been doing. And I'm pretty grateful for that. One thing we'd like to see a better of a practice on too is just making sure we're setting our agendas and we're sharing those ahead of time so that the public know that they have an opportunity to speak or share or be a part of our committee meetings too. So if that's something we can think about and work with your local town person on, for that support, that'd be great. And then one of the challenging things that I know you all face is when we're talking about annual reports. And we have one that's due and that was, you know, the conclusion of our last fiscal year. So we're hoping that as you are thinking about your next budget presentation and what you're doing for your group is maybe during that time, you think about your spending in the last year, that can help you sort of steer your conversation and work on your annual report and you can kind of get that ready at the same time. So I'm wondering if that would be more helpful than next year when we're asking for them and you're a year away and you're really not sure what was happening in those timeframes. And our boards are changing. So just curious if people have any ideas on how best to get that over or to work on that within your committee so that we can get the annual report done a little bit more timely. Kind of just posing that out too, if anybody has other ideas. But if not, we're really hoping you can submit that as your department goes to do their budget piece.
Yeah, that's a good direction. And that reminds me that there's something else that has come up that we're likely going to be revising the board and committee and commission policy document. That's a document that the select board kind of put together to help with management of boards and committees universally. It does include, you know, individual components for every individual board committee. Some of those need updating because they're out of date as far as how the boards and committees function. But I think one of the things that we're going to be looking at is trying to enhance some of the provisions around making sure that public communication and communication for boards and committees is happening in an appropriate way, particularly around ex parte communication. So if a board is quasi-judicial, we want to make sure that we are addressing issues and making sure that we aren't putting ourselves in any kind of legal jeopardy by having folks talking basically outside of the official channels. And that's something that we're looking at addressing as well as just general communication and how the boards and committees engage with the public and with their constituents. So a few things there that will need updating, but I just wanted to give a heads up that that's something that we're looking at doing and we'll be looking for input as well, not just on the boards and the minutes and the agendas and the annual reporting. But we'll be looking on feedback. Those are also a part of that policy, but we'll be looking for feedback on other things as well.
Yeah, and don't forget Kristen loves articles for the messenger, so. She sure does. On time, on time articles for the messenger, that's right.
And I'm the worst at that, so.
Okay, so next, it's your turn to talk. I think we caught up on time.
Still six minutes, bud.
Oh, shoot. So I know, Jackie, you asked if you could go first, so. Come on up.
So I'm Jackie Druin, I'm the Chair of the Reedfield Community Library. I just want to talk briefly about some of the things we're looking forward to doing this coming year. The library continues to be a busy place. Many families and individuals are enjoying the new community room upstairs. Thanks to a lot to you guys. The kitchen's been great. We're excited to have Jen, our new community program coordinator, join Melissa in her office upstairs, in their office upstairs. We're getting ready to do another publicity push to promote the remote worker, small business students and more. Not saying this right. So they can come and use the conference workspace upstairs. So we're working on that. Last month, the outside of the library was painted, looks great. Thank you. And the new LED lights are wonderful too, thank you. We continue to work on library accessibility for the community, building on the good work that we've done this year. For example, the new ramp and the accessible computer station in the adult room. We want to do more outreach to the local small business community to let them know the free services that the library can offer. We've also been working on outreach to our local schools. We've attended open houses and Melissa is visiting Reedfield Elementary Library classes to know the students and to tell them about the community library. And finally, we continue to collaborate with different boards and committees to ensure that the library remains a central hub for the many patrons in our community. For example, we work with the Trails Committee on the annual Full Moon Snowshoe Hike in February and we're working with the Age Friendly Committee to bring two authors as part of the Reedfield U in March. Any questions, Annie? Thank you.
That was very good.
How'd I do on time?
Oh, perfect. It's broken up in 25 minutes. It depends on how everybody else. Do I have a volunteer to go next? Okay, thank you, Marty.
There was some chat online, I think.
I know, I just joined the online chat to see what that question was, but I can't see it yet, so.
Okay. Hi, I'm Marty Hannish, Sturdivan Hill Road, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Budget Committee. I didn't realize there was such time constraints, so I left five pages of my speech back. So we had our organization meeting, organizing meeting on the 13th of this month. And it was very difficult to do that without Andy Tolman, without his leadership. But Angelica was very helpful and Jaren was also at the meeting and he helped clarify some things for us. So the new membership is Pete Davis, Vice Chair, Ellen Snyder, Secretary, and members Chris Sammons and Ed Sims. We went over what we expect to see as the critical issues in the upcoming budget process. And picking from the minutes of the Select Board's retreat meeting in July, we see four pretty important issues. The salt shed needs significant repair. There's the potential for greater increasing damage to the roads due to storms. Snow plowing costs, are we going to, you know, the issue that the board identified. Will this be on a contract basis as in the past? Or would it be something that would become in-house handled by staff? And also beach access for people with limitations. And so the sooner the Select Board can let us know how we can be, how the Budget Committee can be helpful on any of these issues, the sooner we can start organizing to work on them, to provide any assistance we can. And in addition, we have a public communications recommendation. The schedule already includes three meetings for the public. And we feel that this year, more than ever, it would be helpful if we could work into that a couple of meetings early on in the process, public meetings. You know, for one thing, this was a very contentious election process. And we think it'll be helpful for members of the public, regardless of their preferences in the election, to get together and talk about what they see as the big budget issues. There's been a high level of public frustration over financial concerns in particular. And I think it'll be informative for the Budget Committee and the Select Board to hear people talking about their concerns. to hear people talking about their concerns. Not only what I just mentioned, but any other concerns. And uh, in addition to getting that information into the budget process earlier on, uh, perhaps getting people together, people from, who had different preferences in the election, uh, together to talk about their, their issues. Perhaps that will keep Reedfield from becoming one of those, one of those towns uh, in which people from Democrats and Republicans don't really want to talk to each other. That would be really sad. We saw that a number of years ago. Um, but I, we're hoping that getting people together, letting them all explain their concerns, uh, that, that this will help pull the community together. During, uh, we, we thought that during these discussions, uh, the, the town representatives could explain the pressures on the budget and efforts to minimize the impact on taxes, to make sure that everyone understands how, when they get their tax bill, how, what a small portion of that is actually going for town operations, with the bulk going to uh, the school, the school costs and also to the county. And directing people, letting them know how they can make their concerns known to the schools and county, which account for like over uh, 80% of the total tax burden. I think it'd also be helpful for the, for the Select Board, uh, during this, these discussions to indicate how the Select Board is working to minimize any increase in the town share of the taxes, uh, and why certain things have to be, have to be done, uh, that we just can't ignore things and let, let things pile up so that we might be able to avoid a tax increase this year, but then have all of it fall on us next year, the following And uh, again, one big part of this is to get people into town, talking to each other as well as to the board about their concerns, about budget issues, uh, you know, taxes, services, things of that sort. So, uh, we hope that, that you can work in a, a more robust out, out, outreach to the community very early on in the process. Thank you.
Thanks Marty.
Thank you Marty.
Anybody jumping to go next? Paula, thank you.
Thanks. Um, good evening. I'm Paula Clark. I chair the Planning Board. Uh, Planning Board has been very busy over past months. Uh, we have a lot going on. Um, I'll just give you a very brief, broad overview, and if there's anything in particular that you have questions about or would like to hear more about, I'm happy to do that. Um, our work uh, is falling into two major categories. We do site reviews, uh, when applicants put applications forward for different projects, developments, uh, construction and so forth. And we also do a lot of work around revising the land use ordinance and um, ultimately presenting a package to the Select Board to take to town meeting in, in June. Um, site review applications have been, um, there's been a significant number uh, over the past year, and many of those are shoreland applications where um, property owners typically with non-conforming structures, usually close to the lake, um, are looking to either rebuild or make significant changes and improvements to their properties. Uh, those are, they can be pretty complicated from a regulatory perspective. Uh, they get, uh, they get complex when you start looking at state shoreline zoning regulations and uh, in addition to the standards in the municipal ordinance, uh, they take a fair bit of time, but I'm happy to report that we've been successful in every case, um, uh, bringing applicants through that process and working with them to approve their projects. We've also successfully worked with a, a number of businesses in town recently and have issued approvals to them also, either for new businesses or expansions of existing businesses. Um, one of the things that we're currently working on, uh, we're just beginning the process of looking at a package of ordinance revisions to bring to you later in the winter. And that includes a number of different things that, um, a lot of the issues that we're looking at are things within the ordinance that we think could benefit from some additional clarity. Uh, for instance, uh, we, you, I'm sure you remember, we went through the commercial industrial district zoning process uh, earlier this year and went to special town meeting on a couple of applications. It was the first time that that process had been used, and as we worked through it, we found several areas in the ordinance that we felt could benefit from um, uh, less ambiguous language, uh, more clarity. And so we're looking, that's one example of, um, a piece that we're looking at currently, and we'll probably come forward with some recommended changes in that regard. Um, we have several different things that we're working on. Um, a number of different Planning Board members are, are working and have been assigned, uh, drafting, uh, certain provisions. We held a workshop last month, and I'm going to be scheduling one in January so we can continue work on that. The other piece that we're looking at as part of that effort is um, a review of the comprehensive plan strategies that were assigned to the Planning Board, which I might add are numerous. Um, the, there are a number of them that were short-term, um, and in the context of the comp plan, that was within two years. So, we're looking at those, uh, to figure out if there's anything that we can do for the upcoming, um, town meeting in that regard. Uh, anything that we might be able to implement. Um, I'm not certain yet, but that is under review, and that's a piece that we've, we've begun, and I did want to let you know that. Eric mentioned, um, uh, bylaws and so forth. That's something that we're also going to take a look at. The Planning Board bylaws haven't been updated for quite some time, and I have a number of things in mind, I think, could be included that would improve the process for us. So we're also looking at that. And I think I'll stop there. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you Paula. So next, we're gonna go to Zoom. Elaine is, sorry I missed your question the first time Elaine, I was not on Zoom yet.
Okay, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, great. Um, first, I want to make sure that everybody is aware that Maggie Edmondson and I co-chair, uh, the Age Friendly Committee, and uh, from our perspective, that's been working out pretty well. Um, so we have, we are looking forward to a very busy winter. Uh, we have three, uh, very active initiatives that will be going on simultaneously. Uh, the cafe at the middle school is going strong. Uh, we have very consistent attendance, anywhere between 15 to 20 people. Uh, several, there is a, uh, very dedicated Manchester contingent uh, of individuals that come. And um, there has been a variety of programs, so people seem to be very enthused and pleased about how that's been working out. And of course, the wonderful aspect of doing it at the middle school is the interaction between uh, the students and uh, the people who attend. So everybody really seems to be enjoying that. Um, the next thing, we are hoping to be able to move forward, um, with our uh, emergency response, um, education program, and hopefully, uh, to be able to get started on our pilot project as soon as we um, get the news on that grant. And so we had kind of an introductory event, um, on Sunday, uh, with the Red Cross doing an excellent. I was really quite pleased at uh, the quality of the presentation, uh, that was done. Um, of course, it's always hard to attract a, a large crowd when it's 60 degrees and sunny in the middle of November. Um, so we will continue, uh, to develop more workshops and educational opportunities uh, as we move forward with this project. And of course, third, we are actively getting started on planning for Reedfield U. And so, um, we hope the calendar of events will be set by January 15th, so we can um, jump off with the publicity, uh, for that project as well. Um, we have been, right off the bat, we have been working with Jen, and we know that Maggie will be working much closer with her in terms of setting up the calendar and the registration. So we really appreciate that. And I also want to say that, um, I really appreciate all of the help from the staff in terms of the publicity for the program that we had this past Sunday.
Thank you.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Okay.
Next. Okay, Rob. Rob, the uh.
I'm Rob Peel, Chair of the Trails Committee, and my presentation is probably gonna be the shortest one. Um, the past year is the first time in a while that we really haven't had a major trail building, uh, project underway. So what we've mainly been doing is maintenance type activities on the trails, which is very important. Uh, the fairgrounds has held up very well. We did maintenance back, I think in the spring there. Um, so that stuff is fairly straightforward, part of our committee's work, and we have, we're also supported by other volunteers in town, and we've been supported by the staff. Matt Seams and probably others recently added a couple of small culverts, uh, where the um, Esca Trail crosses the transfer station roads, which um, eliminated a couple of very steep spots on a trail that's otherwise a, a very flat trail. And while it's not terribly improved, it's a nice trail through the woods that I think a lot of people, even people with some mobility issues probably can handle. Uh, so that was very welcome to get that done, and it'd been something we'd been talking with Eric and others about for a couple of years. So I was glad to see that finally get done, and there'll be some other things I'll be talking to Eric about as well. Um, this year, we, uh, so far have something like about 150 hours of volunteer time that's gone in on Trails work, and based on the current uh, minimum wage, that's over $2,000 worth of work for the town. Um, and that pretty much is it unless people have questions about anything we're doing, or. I will make a plug. If you know any, especially younger people that would like to get involved in Trails work, um, we would really like to have that. Right now, I think we have three or four openings, and our average age is getting up there, and some of us are reaching the point where we maybe don't want to do as much chainsaw work and things like that. So please spread the word that we, and when I say younger, anybody under 60 will probably be.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rob. Hannah.
Well, you almost beat Rob that last time. Hannah, Rec Chair. Uh, so our Rec Department supports three sports. Each year, soccer. Um, this year, we had 240 kids sign up, so we start soccer with a skills day that brings everybody in, all levels, and then we start breaking it down by teams and ages, um, every Saturday from the middle of September till the end of October. We always end it a week before the trunk or treat, so that we're clear that day to help, um, set up that entire event. Um, basketball, we, uh, work cooperatively with the schools to use Manchester Elementary, Reedfield Elementary, and the middle school for games on Saturdays. Third to sixth grade, um, plays against other towns, so they can travel anywhere as far as Lisbon to Windsor to, um, Augusta, Monmouth. Um, and we supported over 150 kids in our basketball program last year from first grade to sixth grade. Um, and actually, this year, we did open it up to a few seventh graders, because there's kind of a window in the middle school where they don't make the team, but they're too old for rec, so um, it was kind of approved with the other leagues that we could bring in some of the seventh graders to be able to play. Uh, our baseball and softball program, obviously, we have the baseball field, and we've been working to, um, get the softball field improvement done. Um, so that's, while we run all of our programs, we support, um, the trunk or treat. We help run kickball, which is a super successful event every year to chase, um, and gets bigger and more fun every year. Um, I feel like there's a third event that we do too, but I don't have my notes. So, um, I will say that Easter, yes, Easter, thank you Melissa. I know there's another like holiday in there. Uh, so Easter egg hunt, we have actually converted to doing all, um, at the fairgrounds, outside the fence, inside the fence, all through the woods for the big kids. Um, and so that's a very successful event. Generally, like 100-ish kids, I would say, show up that morning, and it's done in about 20 minutes or less.
It's, it's less. It's less.
Yeah. So you're like, oh, you're five minutes late in your car, sorry. Like, everyone's done. Um, yeah. So, so there's that. Um, I will say, we also, um, the Rec Department kind of initiated that we needed more things at the fairgrounds. That's been an ongoing project. Um, we are working on fundraising, final fundraising stage of that project, and also planning board approval and development of the final, um, like specs of it, I guess. Um, so while it's not a complete rec project, there are cooperative other, um, committees that are helping with that. The fundraising group, Rec feels a little bit, I would say, responsible for helping that also get to completion. So cooperatively fundraising overlaps with, um, the Rec Department helping with some of those fundraising events, um, for that project to get done.
Hopefully, there'll be snow this year for your, uh.
Yes.
For sledding too.
And maybe ice on the lake.
That's right. Yeah.
Um, I will say, um, well, we're super thankful for all the help that the town, um, people do give us in, um, yeah, taking care of signups to come in and, as well as Teresa with Indergov, um, uh, with online signups, it has helped tremendously to get, uh, involvement where our basketball program involves, um, all of the communities. Our soccer program now involves all of the communities. And eventually, we may get baseball and softball to be a complete Miranda Cook community, but right now, Manchester still has their own teams. Anyway, um, our software, I mean, online signups helps get everybody in the same pool so that we can include everybody from all the towns and have it in a Miranda Cook, um, thing, even though it's supported by the Reedfield Rec Department, because we are the town that has the Rec Department. Um, we are looking at software that would make that even easier and take a lot of burden off of Teresa. So, I'm hoping we can find something to work out for that.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Malaya, Grace. Oh, Grace.
I'm Grace Keen. I am, uh, Chair of the Cemetery Committee since this morning. So, even though I've been on the committee since 1996, but, um, since August, we've had, you know, some changes. We lost Ben as our sexton, but we've gained Chris, and we, the committee thinks he's going to be wonderful. Uh, we're very impressed with his enthusiasm and, um, what he's done so far and, um, comes recommended from our committee. Uh, we continue to, you know, oversee or, not oversee, but, um, look for the train, the tree work and the stone repairs that need to be done, and since we had the, um, changing of the And since we had the changing of the sexton and we're kind of behind on the tree work, but Chris is going to be taking care of that, you know, real soon. And we have already talked about our budget for this next year. And we, at this point, we're planning to hold it to what it was this year. And I'll put in a plug. We need another committee member. We are down one with losing Andy. And that's about all I have to say.
Can I just ask a quick question, Grace?
Sure.
When you're talking about the tree work, is that different from the contracted tree work we did earlier in the year? Or is that more work that we gotta look at?
Yes, because that was last year.
Right.
So we're on this year's budget and we haven't done any tree work yet.
Okay.
So we still have, I think it's seven thousand dollars.
So we should be, we should be watching for that.
Yeah, I'll be working with Chris to make sure that we get that moved along.
Perfect.
For spring work, almost certainly. Although this winter, you might be able to do tree work year-round. Who knows?
You might.
Might. Thanks, Grace.
You're welcome.
Lenia Coons, I'm standing in for Bruce Hunter for the Conservation Commission. I'm going to have another appointment. I have a long list of things that we have done. I'm going to mention four of them. And I have handouts for you at the end of my discussion. First, there was the repair of trails following multiple severe weather events, which has gone on throughout the year. We helped with, we joined members of the Trails Committee and the Kennebec Land Trust to assess and address damage at the fairgrounds, Fog Farm Conservation Area, and Torsey Pond Nature Preserve. And there's still additional work to do because there've been additional storms. We've expanded our educational activities to include articles in the Messenger on such subjects as invasive plants as well as land in Reedfield that is open to the public for hunting. So we've tried to make that a regular activity, educational outreach activity. Hunting is not allowed at the Torsey Pond Nature Preserve as part of the management plan. And all boundaries have now been posted to the legal standard with no hunting signs. The location of each sign has been documented. And Eric, you're going to get the digital file.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
Oh, my.
But everything, each, no matter where you stand on the boundary, you can see a sign. And you can see a sign coming in from the lake. There had been signs shot up, especially near the lake, and one had been removed. At least one had been removed. Now we know where they all are in case anybody's questioning it. And as I said, they can all be seen, one next to the other. So there's no problem with that. And this is specifically no hunting, not the purple paint, which is no trespassing, no access, which is not what we want at Torsey Pond. There is hunting still allowed from water. And it's just no dry land hunting. Fourth thing that I want to mention is a bench acknowledging the contributions of Milton Wright to Reedfield and the state of Maine has been constructed and installed by the Water's Edge at the Torsey Pond Nature Preserve. So if you take the Orange Trail down on the southern side of the preserve, it's a beautiful walk down there and then a lovely observation post right there to look out over the lake. So next, I'll hand out.
Thank you. That is pretty clear.
Thanks, Lenia.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you. I'm just making sure I haven't missed anybody online. We are good.
I will say that I spoke with Bruce Burgoyne, Chair of the Open Space Working Group. And he had just said that he would be, they will be... They met with you recently, but they'll be holding a public hearing in December in order to help get early public engagement in the process that they're pursuing, which I think is in line with the direction the Select Board set and that a lot of our boards and committees are working to make sure we have the most public engagement early on as we can for issues. So that was all Bruce had to report out.
Okay. While that, we're at the last piece, is just thanking you for attending and coming. And I hope that you find this part as valuable as I do. I really like to, although I see people in passing and sometimes I attend different meetings, but I think hearing this information together is good, seeing, making sure we remember each other's faces. And I look forward to whatever happens in the next year. And hopefully, we can make some good budget goals and look at some new policies to polish up on. And really, just thank you for what you do for the community. And if you don't want to stay, nobody will be upset. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We'll just give it a second. Okay, back to our agenda. Twenty-five zero four-two, minutes of the Select Board meeting of November fourth.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Jaren and Catherine are excused. Eric, do you have information on the warrants? Because that was Jaren, right? Twenty-five zero four-three, we can stay till the next, or do you have information?
I can run through it really quickly. Just give me a chance to get into the next section of the packet because I have that broken out. Let's see here. So the warrants will be nineteen and twenty.
Nineteen and twenty, yeah.
Yeah. And let's see here. So I still have the chairs pack it up. All right. Okay, here we go. Okay, so we had warrant nineteen, the amount of five hundred and ten thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty, three hundred and eighty-four-five cents. Warrant twenty was twenty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. The total of those two, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. And this one, we had some items that I think, fire tech and safety. We had a lot of work done for the gear for the fire department. We had, let's see, Frank D.'s painting. We made a progress payment for a little over eight thousand dollars for that. And that work has since been completed. So you'll see a next, another check coming forward on the next warrant to finalize that, I believe. And the big one on this, of course, is RSU thirty-eight at three hundred and sixty-three thousand, ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. We also bid, did pay Scott Horn his first installment for the Winter Road contract at eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents. Those are the big ones, anything over a couple thousand dollars that I think are noteworthy that aren't just standard expenses.
Eric, I had a question about the Kennebec County Sheriff's Office line, one thousand one hundred and five dollars. That wasn't for Election Day, right? That was too soon after.
Jeez, that seems pretty close to what we would end up paying.
That's, that's why I'm...
Yeah, let me, let me see.
The day after. Teresa paid that, that promptly. I know. She's prompt.
There's a cha, I'll, I'll look at that one. There's a chance that's for like dispatch or something, but I will... Thirteen and eighty-five? That's what it is. Yeah.
That is amazing.
Well, we knew ahead of time what it was going to cost.
We are efficient at paying our bills. Nobody left until two AM, but the bill was still paid on eleven-seventh.
Well, the sheriff was only there until nine, so.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants nineteen and twenty to the sum of five hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Catherine and Jaren are approved.
And we do have the next two warrants up here. If you folks want to take a look at those for us.
Sure will.
Before you leave, that'd be appreciated.
Next item on our agenda are Select Board communications. Does anybody have any general information or pieces to check in on about this evening?
Just making progress with the, as far as the plow contract stuff goes. Talking to several different people, a lot of different ideas. Coming up with a lot of the same themes with everybody. Labor is one of the big issues. Traditionally, plow contracts, I think, are usually bid by guys that are in the construction industry and already have some of the equipment, you know, that they, they like to employ. So one of the ideas that we might be working on is how to change that contract to attract a different type of bidder. Make it more attainable or more doable for a different type of bidder. So that's one of the big things that we're working on. I'm trying to set a meeting of the minds up this week. We'll be following up with some information and possibly get together with Eric and sit down and discuss these things. More to come.
Awesome. Thanks, Dave. We all know that it's a burning topic that...
Yeah, it's a big one, Dave.
It's fast approaching.
Quick question. Was there much discussion at all or any discussion about the idea of possibly breaking up the contract and the different parts?
And that was one of the things we've talked about, too, is that that might be an option. So I want to try to, and that goes to that, what I was saying about making it more attainable to some people. If it's not such a big piece, maybe it would be more attractive to others to bid on that don't typically bid on a plow contract, so.
Wonderful. Steve, did you have anything first, like, checking?
Jaren sent me an email. He wanted, he wanted to just say that he checked the internet at the library and he said they have exceptional internet and they don't need anything from us. They've got, the state of Maine has provided everything they need there. So they need no additional bandwidth. Also, he said there's a public hearing on December eleventh at six-thirty PM for Open Space. So I mentioned that, but that's the actual date, December eleventh, six-thirty PM. And it'll be here at the town office and on Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, we're now on staff. This is an Eric-heavy meeting. Staff communication, Eric, you have ten minutes.
Okay, hopefully, it will be less than that, I guarantee you.
I've had days watching you.
Hey, I want to get out of here, too. So the one thing that I wanted to mention, because this is the second meeting in November, that we will have town office closures for Thanksgiving holiday. So Thursday and Friday will be closed. They're federal holidays. However, however, we also will be closing early on Wednesday. So Wednesday, the town office will be open from eight until noon, closing. Staff are using vacation time to take the afternoon if they need to travel or whatever else. Enough of them are doing that that we opt to just close the office and the transfer station. So that's, that's how that's going to work. Saturday, the transfer station will be open to get rid of your turkey carcass. We'll be, we'll be all ready to accept those, however many you have. That's really my manager's report. I'd given an update earlier in the month and things are just kind of rolling along. But the holiday closures are the big, the big one that I wanted to report out on. And then treasurer's report. But before I do that, anything, any questions? All right.
Eric, I do have a question. Sorry, it's burning. If, and while we had this conversation in the, and the previous contract, if the state closes, we close. If the state were to close on Wednesday, what would happen?
If, that's only for winter weather.
So it's only for, it's only for anomalies.
And we changed that.
I was asking if it did change because that was something that was talked, that was my question.
It was, it was a bad policy, so we changed it.
Great. Love it.
Because what happens in Augusta, it depends on the administration, which can change pretty wildly, but also depends on the weather and we're not, we're not Augusta, so. Yep. Okay, so the treasurer's report, this is for the month of October and everything looked good for the month. Investments, one CD and one SEDAR did mature. They totaled half a million dollars. We rolled those into three-month short-term SEDARS at five percent. And I guarantee that's the last time we're going to see five percent for a long time. I was surprised that that was still hanging out there. I said, well, hey, for three months, we'll, we'll run it. That's APY, so it's only like a, you know, it'll be a fraction of that for the yield, but, or the return for this investment. But anyway, three months, we'll be doing this again and reinvesting that. And rates are going forward, I think likely three and a half to four percent, depending on the term that we see. We don't typically do the eighteen-month to two-year terms. We usually do six months to a year, sometimes less if we can pull a bit more out of the system. But that's where we're at right now. The Budget Committee had their first meeting this, on November thirteenth, as was noted. And we did communicate the Select Board goals to them and to all the boards and committees. So I, I hope that, that we have, again, by doing this outreach and communication, we can have consistent process. I think the Budget Committee goals might be a little bit different than the Select Board goals, but that, I think, can be pretty easily reconciled. But the good thing is they're thinking about it, talking about it and communicating. So I think we're on the right track with that process. The revenues and expenses should be around thirty-three percent in this report. There's some variation there, but, but it's not, nothing outside of the ordinary. Real estate payments are down for the month but up for the year-to-date. Again, that reflects earlier payment of, of those taxes, in part because of the earlier start to the, to the collection process last, in July. Transfer station fees are down for the month, but they remain up for the year-to-date. Motor vehicles revenues are up from September of last year and they remain up for the year-to-date. So that's really good. Motor vehicle revenues are a good indicator and one of our primary sources of revenue at over six hundred thousand. Total receipts are down for the month but up for the year-to-date appropriately. We expect to see receipts being up and they, and they are. And then that likely reflected an anomaly in October of the prior year. It has nothing to do with this year's revenue, which looks normal. Expenses are very much in line with a note that road and drainage appears to be light, but that's because we haven't used really anything that hasn't been capital. We've been using capital funds. Again, not having these things mixed makes it easier for us to see what's happening with the operating budget. And we have yet to start winter maintenance payments, at least not in October. So that was why roads looks light. That ninety thousand dollar check to Scott Horn will fix that really quick early in November. So that's my treasurer's report.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone have any questions for Eric? Okay, boards, committees, commissioners, departments. We did have minutes from the Cemetery Committee, the Open Space Working Group, and the Trails Committee. So thank you very much for those. Anybody else from the committee have anything they'd like to say that they didn't already say in the last portion of our meeting?
Anybody?
We have five minutes for public communication. Is there anybody that would like to... Nobody else online either? Thank you very much. We're going to twenty-five zero four-four-four. Appoint a Select Board member to participate in collective bargaining. We have five minutes set aside for this. We're going to twenty-five zero four forty-four. Appoint a select board member to participate in collective bargaining. Five minutes set aside for this. Eric, can you Eric, can you just tell us what's the time, you know, what what does that look like? Time commitment and um?
Yeah. Um should be two, maybe three meetings, um if all goes well. I'm hoping it's a a smooth process. Uh the the union uh has a new rep, um so that might, I don't know the dynamics there, but uh typically it's a fairly clean process. Um I'm not, I don't believe there's much room for debate. Um the you know, interest rates have dropped, uh things have stabilized. We've done an aggressive increase in wages over the past few years. Um so I think that we're in a very solid position to to do um what's right with uh respect to um following um inflation and following wage uh trends across the board with minimum wage and all of that, so I I think that we're in a good spot. Again, um a couple, two or three meetings, uh maybe a little bit of a phone call outside of that. The um the intent really is to um respect both the uh employees and taxpayers, uh and so it's striking a balance. And that's what we try to do every every time this comes up. This is separate from the remainder of the contract. We did actually change this intentionally the last time we negotiated the contract, so that we wouldn't get stuck um having to negotiate after the budget was effectively put together, which put us in a pretty poor bargaining position. Also, um uh was a recipe for uncertainty and perhaps either unfund- un- underfunding or overfunding wages uh wage lines. So we made this so that we can get the process effectively completed by, you know, early, early in the um uh January, February and get the budget nailed down um with real numbers uh in the contract, so that's how that all came to be, uh and that's the intent of this. Uh again, um it's a good faith uh discussion, um but but we were obviously representing the management side of things uh and trying to um trying to thread that needle, so. Uh Catherine did say that she would do it if nobody else was willing, uh but um just putting that out there.
Is this something that uh that we speak about ahead of time and so we know where we're going with it or what we're looking for?
Yeah, so so we would um uh I'd be working with whichever member of the select board um wanted to um participate. Uh we could bring it back to the whole board, but in the past, we've just kind of managed this as a administrator and um select board representative discussion and maybe give an update if 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 that, but.
I think people have communicated with that person in the past before too, like I remember years past, I sent my thoughts to the person from this.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it wouldn't it wouldn't rise to the level, I don't believe, of an executive session or anything like that. I think it's more like a subcommittee type of thing.
I just didn't know if there were like parameters that you would you kind of look for ahead of time that you went in with that we all thought were the right numbers, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's so so I guess um to some extent, yeah, so I we would we would have a discussion about um, you know, the budget, the the environment, all of those things. Um and then if um if 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 we wanted, we could bring it back to the whole board, but I I would expect it would just be a consensus of of two or three.
I think that's that's fine.
I'm interested.
Awesome.
So Catherine.
Oh, I I moved that Sean be the uh select board representative on negotiations.
I'll second that.
And a motion in a very fast second.
Boy, we just gained some time there.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Do you have to do a speech?
Nope. Acceptance. It's unanimous.
So Sean and I will talk, uh and if you wanna talk to Sean independently or me independently, whatever, um we just can't do it all together.
Yeah, right. New business, twenty-five oh four five, selection of a youth sports program management software provider that we got a tease about last time Jen was here, so. Thank you, Jen.
Um my name's Jen. I'm the community programming coordinator. Um before this position that started for me in September, I was part of rec for a couple of years and so I feel like I really understand the signups and what is a headache and what does not work and what really needed to change. Um the whole rec department is eagerly anticipating this software. It will take um just a lot of of issues out of the signups and let us focus more on on the youth sports and growing them and growing the programs and now fundraising um and many other things that we really like to be hands-on with, and so um having new software will will really ease that burden. Um I did write a long report here for you guys to read. Um I will go over it briefly to keep it nice and concise. I will first talk about our problems. Um there, we currently use um online signups through Android Gov and they go through Android Gov, um and then they're sent to Teresa and then Teresa sends them to to me and to whoever else is um then organize an ex- an Excel spreadsheet. Um it is not concise or clear. It's a huge headache. Android Gov's gives us a million numbers that we don't need. Um and so in in the Excel spreadsheet that I usually get, it has gosh, probably thirty fields when we only use about five of them, and so it it's just a ton of time that we invest in consolidating the information that we actually need to get the job done. Um this new software, our biggest goal is to keep that information concise and to us and to the important needs of of what we really use. Um I know Teresa would love the burden of the signups being taken off her plate, cause it it's a lot, and Android Gov truly is just not a a great outlet that we use. I looked at uh four different companies. I looked at Team Sideline, Team Connect, um Sports Engine and MyRec.com. Um through just uh an internet search, those were the top four companies. I didn't really find many more than those four companies, so I thought they all each deserved a a good um review. I met with each one of them. I had a tour of their services. Before I met with them, I did have a goal list of things that we really need, um that are necessary for us. Um we need clear and easy-to-read forms. Um us as the rec department truly needs the ability to edit those forms and manipulate how they look and the information that is on them. Um we really need a family discount, a maximum family fee um to keep our program safe. We really need background checks. It's not something that we've done with every single volunteer, but I think that's a goal for us moving forward um just to keep everyone confident in in our our programs. Um we really need web and app services. We need affordability, customer service availability, clear and attractive website building and easy-to-learn software. One thing that we have enjoyed, uh which is a free service, is um Team Reach app, because we have tried all communication and we do email, we do text, we do phone calls, and now we have Team Reach. And what's very difficult is because there's so many ways to communicate, things get lost and people don't know which one will be the best communication. Team Reach has been the best for us, but Team Reach could do signups, I would have chosen them, but unfortunately, they are only a communication app, and that's what we love about them. So I knew that um looking forward to our software, I really wanted an app for clear communication for for families. We've we've learned through trial and trial and error that the email and texting, it's just not effective and it's not clear and someone always misses the messages. Team Sideline came up with all of my boxes checked. Um they do background checks. We they have sibling discounts, maximum family fees. They do discount codes, so people um can just type in a code and they can have their fee waived if they need, and it would be just a really, really simple process for them. Right now, um we just kind of plug in their information um under the scholarship, but it would be really great if they could sign up themselves, be able to provide us with all the same information that everyone else does without us needing to to do that extra stuff with them. It'd be easy for obvious reasons. Um they have um sponsorships right on their website. Um we can have signups and at the end of the signups, we can put, would you like to donate two dollars to our fairgrounds project? I thought that was kind of beautiful and and easy to make a donation. And as we've learned with the the bottle donations, those small numbers add up really quickly. Um and sometimes people just don't know those opportunities to uh donate, and so I think if we're giving it to them, it'll I think it will be surprising how great it is. Team Sideline had a two-point-six credit card fee, um and that was very reasonable. That was actually the smallest out of all of them. Team Connect had a three-point-nine-nine percent of credit card sales and a three-dollar uh service fee per transaction. Um they keep that money, so although they were the cheapest at five hundred dollars a year, they collect off of every single registrant um that we do. Um and to me, I felt like I I liked my fee being very clear. Um and Team Sideline, they do have a smaller tier. Um I think it was four-sixty-eight or four-fifty-eight a year, uh but it only allows for up to five hundred registrants for the entire year. So the nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars that I listed gives us full access to all of their software um with no limits. They also will give us facilities management and so um rental of the hall, rental of the beach can all be consolidated right into that website. It'll be beautiful. It'll also take Angelica's back. It will make just everybody's job just so much easier and will let really let us focus on the things that will will make a difference, you know? Um and unfortunately, signups are not the thing that make a difference. Sports Engine is a great company. They are a huge company. They're owned by NBC Universal. Um they have been around for a long time, so they definitely understand the ins and outs and needs. And they seemed great, but when I've asked around about them, cause I also wanted to hear some personal testimonies, I haven't heard very great things. I've heard about a lot of schedule mishaps that messed up an entire season where kids missed games and um then confronted with the problems. They did not fix the problems. And so they assured me that they did a software update that changed everything, but those complaints still do exist and they are real testimonies, and so I do trust them. They also, it was eight hundred dollars for a first year and then two thousand dollars for every following year. Um MyRec is one that came highly recommended, um and they have a lot of really great features, but their services are uh a little less than three thousand dollars annual annually, which seems very expensive. Um and they have no app whatsoever, which seems trivial for me to need, but I just feel I feel through my own personal experiences, we really need an app. Um and I felt like with Team Sideline, it was reasonable and they have the app. I just think communication would be so streamlined and so awesome. So, yeah, I I I think this software is extremely important for why I said, I think the creation of my job has already taken a lot off of the rec department and let us focus on a lot of things that we really needed to, like fundraising and growing these programs. Um we are now just doing a lot more. I love to see we've uh have a modified basketball program opening up and it's just beautiful to now have the time to anticipate and ask about the community's needs and what they want, instead of feeling so inundated with the signups and the organization that it 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 just felt like constant work, whereas now we can really be passionately involved with what the community wants from the rec program. I know, it's kind of my spiel. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. I ask everything of these companies, so.
I I have to tell you, when I looked at their websites after I got your report, I was just the, I I was in agreements with you too, but the fundraising and the app side of things was what really drew me to like, just I think any way we can make this stuff easier and.
Yeah.
And it's a one-and-done, right? A lot of these families in town, they sign up their kid for pre-K soccer and they don't want to fill that information every time.
Yes.
You're telling me I didn't have to do that every time, uh I'd be I'd have been pretty happy.
Yeah, it was really beautiful. They save all the information. You could anticipate the next season instead of having to check our website or our Facebook to see if the next season is open. You can just go to our Team Sideline website and under, I don't know, it'll be so clearly shown and I think it's beautiful. We can put our schedules right on there. People can go onto that website and see a reel of our sports schedules that are happening. I think it'll give more engagement and just a much friendlier time for our users.
I say if you're happy, we're happy.
Yeah, I don't I don't wanna sway.
Anything that has to do with these, I don't know, eh eh, whatever you say.
Yeah, I don't wanna sway your head too much, but this is feels like exactly what we were hoping to get out of this position, you know, like I you know, what, do we just need to make a motion?
As a as a coach for how many years? How jealous are you of this?
This is great. I I'm I am very jealous, yes.
So I think we need to make a motion to approve this purchase out of select board reserves, right?
I moved to.
Would that be right? Hold on, hold on.
But I wanna move, I wanna make it happen.
Because how else, is there other funding available to pay for this at this time?
We did put um some money, five hundred in for software for this year's budget. Um however, um we also have other uh expense lines that we could draw from, so I I think that it's most appropriate to just pull it out of the recreation budget. Um it it is a thousand dollars, but we we can we can cover that with what we have, I think, ver- very easily, and that's my recommendation for the payment. And a hundred percent of you would Jen's recommendation on the the software choice, so.
Okay, and that have you, that's not gonna change anything with the rec board on current plans and their budget?
No, we're 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 good there. Um we've um because we we didn't have uh the position filled for a a portion of the summer. Uh we um were a bit ahead on um on wages. That's gonna be one area of of benefit, but also I I believe that this is gonna be utilized by all the different sports teams, so if we pull a little bit out of that, um out of each of those, maybe a hundred dollars per per department or uh per a sport uh or activity, that we'll be able to pull this together without without having to use reserve funds or not reserve, but um contingency.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, you know, it's just it's, I do think although it's heavily for rec sports, but you know, mentioning other like Kyle Hall.
And Reed Field U.
And the Reed Field U, folks have been interested and stuff, so as long as.
We can, but yeah, some of it will take a hundred dollars on our Reed Field U.
But I feel like we can trust you to figure that piece out.
Yeah, we'll 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 make sure it's covered.
So can I just make a motion to?
Authorize Eric.
Authorize Eric to find nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for.
Just cause we're ten minutes early now, Sean, doesn't mean you need to use it.
I have a motion?
Okay. Yeah, he's in motion, isn't he?
I have a motion.
Oh, second?
I have a motion a second. Do I have any other discussion?
Tell you, I'm voting.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Catherine and Jaren are excused.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, last agenda item is do we have any other business upcoming meetings or future agenda items you would like to add?
We have one meeting in December. If you have any agenda items that you'd like to see covered, make sure we cover them. Uh send them to Sean, send them to me. Uh we'll make sure we try to work him in.
Okay. Have a nice Thanksgiving, everybody. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
So, you get your deer yet?